Seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Call the order, the regular meeting of the Brentwood City Commissioners for March 22, 2021. Let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present. We are conducting this meeting electronically as per the Governor's orders, and I will now read a prepared statement. As you may know, Governor Bill Lee issued Executive Order 16 on March 16 and extended its provisions by Executive Order 34 on May 6, Executive Order 51 on June 29, Executive Order 60 on August 28, Executive Order 65 on October 28, Executive Order 71 on December 22, and Executive Order 78 on February 26. These orders were issued to ensure the government continues to function openly and transparently during the COVID-19 emergency while taking appropriate measures to protect the health and safety of citizens and government officials. In his orders, Governor Lee emphasized that in the interest of limiting the community's threat of COVID-19, private and governmental entities of all types should eliminate large public gatherings and conduct business remotely by electronic means to the greatest extent possible. The orders provide that governments may meet to conduct essential business by electronic means when the governing body determines that doing so is necessary to protect citizens. Sadly, COVID-19 continues to spread across the state and Williamson County. Therefore, the city has determined that in the interest of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans and the citizens of Brentwood, it is necessary to the Board of Commissioners to meet partially electronically rather than in person. We have posted the link for public viewing on the city's website, social media pages, and we have disseminated the same to the media. We'll now move to our roll call, which I mentioned that all Commissioners were present. We'll go to our invocation by Commissioner McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this city and its residents. We ask that you guide us tonight and each day in the decisions that we make and that your will would be done in all that we do. We thank you for our health, safety, and security because we are blessed to live in this city and country. Lord, I ask that you protect all of our school personnel, healthcare workers, and first responders. Keep them safe and healthy as they help us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. We'll now move to our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Smithson. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will now read a proclamation from Arbor Day, and we have present the Chairperson of the Tree Board, Lynn Tucker. Appreciate the Tree Board and all their hard work, and also Commissioner Nelson Andrews for his hard work as the Commission Representative on the Tree Board. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy. Now, therefore, as Mayor of the City of Brentwood, I do join with the Board of Commissioners to proclaim March 27, 2021 is Arbor Day in the City of Brentwood, and urge citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And this week, I want to thank our Tree Board and all our many volunteers, and also Deanna Lambert, for a great program since we can't meet in person as we traditionally do on Arbor Day. And by God's grace, next year, we'll have a great Arbor Day celebration in person. We've had several things. On March 21, had a kickoff at the library, and they gave away free seedlings, also ice cream. There was an ice cream truck there that was giving ice cream away, and the Cub Scout group did a video showing the proper way to plant a tree. March 22 was Kids' Day. March 23 is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Education Day. March 23 also is a library tutorial Tuesday about trees. It's called Cut Out, Leave Out with Paige. You can watch it on YouTube. March 24 Creative Arts Day, featuring Storytime with Ms. Pat. On March 25 is Ask Arbor's Day. And on March 26, on Friday, we'll have the Forestry Fund Day, and we'll also have a plant and seed swap at the John P. Holt Brentwood Library. And on March 27, 11:00 a.m., there'll be an Arbor Day presentation live on Facebook at 11:00 a.m., a great video done by many, many individuals in the city who have helped and worked with the city concerning Arbor Day. I hope many of you will get to enjoy these and will also plant some trees, Brentwood's known for its beautiful, beautiful trees. We'll now move to our public hearing. It's a public hearing for Resolution 2021-10, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory in the City of Brentwood by owner consent and the plan of services for said territory located south of Notaway Lane in the Terramore subdivision.
But I just wanted to touch base. You'd be calling when we're up.
All right. If...
Maybe 10 minutes.
If there's a...
All right. Bye.
The... Is there anyone in the annex room to speak to this public hearing?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. This public hearing is declared closed. Right, we'll now move to our approval or correction of minutes for our March 8, 2021 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McMillan, and a second by Vice Mayor Travis. Mr. Bednar.
Roll call votes. Commissioner Andrews.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Gorman.
Aye.
Commissioner McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Smithson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Travis.
Aye.
And Mayor Little.
Aye. We will correction minutes, passage unanimously. We'll now move to comments from citizens. Mr. Petrowski, are there any citizens?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Thank you, sir. And we'll now move to our report from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight, just a reminder for the Commissioners and for the public that we will have our review meeting of the proposed capital improvements plan, and that meeting will be a week from tomorrow, March 30, beginning at 4:00 p.m. It will be an electronic meeting, so it can be viewed livestream from the city's website for anyone interested in viewing that, and it'll be recorded and available after the live meeting for anyone to go back and review. But again, that is at 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 30. Then the other item is just an announcement that with the Franklin Road widening project that's ongoing, beginning Wednesday morning at around 7:00 a.m., the intersection of West Concord Road and Franklin Road will be closed until probably late in the day on Friday is what's expected. So anyone that normally accesses Franklin Road from West Concord will either need to go south to Long Street or north to Jackson Lane. And I will say that that planned closure is subject to the weather and could change, but did want to have that out. We did have posted that on our social media sites to help the public be aware of that. Those are the two items I have, Mayor, but would be glad to answer any questions of yourself or any Commissioners.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bednar?
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioners.
Mr. Bednar, I don't expect you to tell the whole incident, but would you talk to the services about the device, the people, the police you used to help with that car theft recently, just how we tracked it and all? I think that's really good for the public to know.
If I may, Commissioner, I will defer to Chief Hughes, who's on here, so that I don't either mistake something or state more than he would like me to state with regards to that. So Chief Hughes, can you address that?
Mr., are you referring to the incident that was reported about last night's car theft?
Yes. If you can share the device, because I read about what you used to track, you know, it down. So I just thought it was very good, and the public should...
Well, it's not technology that the Brentwood Police Department has exclusively. It was basically assistance rendered to us by the vehicle manufacturer that allowed the vehicle to be tracked. So we had a BMW that was stolen from a residence here in Brentwood, and we reached out to the vehicle manufacturer and was able to track the movements and location of that vehicle, and ultimately, with the assistance of outside jurisdictions, we were able to apprehend the suspects and recover that vehicle.
I just thought the public might like to know that. I love our police doing the job that they're doing. That's important to share with the public. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had something for City Manager Bednar.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Travis, go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Bednar, I want to just follow up. I could have put this in my comments, but since you were talking about Franklin Road, I wish we could turn some extra attention to Franklin Road. I know this is a state project, a state project that already has gone on a long time, and thank goodness Brentwood has somebody that's in there trying to oversee and help Brentwood where they can. I think, though, we need some more attention. Those cut-throughs that go across Franklin Road are horrible. They're many speed bumps, and I didn't say many, but there are many, but they're many speed bumps, and some of them are just really, really large. I travel that a lot because, you know, I live down that section of Franklin Road, and I feel like I'm doing damage to my car, and I feel like there are citizens in Brentwood that feel like their cars are being damaged as well. I think we have tried to be patient, and I think our thought is that those cut-throughs are eventually going to come up, and they're going to pave, but there's days and weeks that go by that there's not a lot of work and a lot of progress made there. I wish we could, as a city, could just ask T-Dot to fix the cut-throughs and fix them now, even if they're going to be redone in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. I don't care. I'm tired of the many speed bumps. I think they're tearing up cars in Brentwood, and I'd like to see us turn some attention to smoothing that out. I look forward to your comments on that.
Well, Vice Mayor, I don't know that I have any comments on it. I certainly will carry that message forward. As you know, they are hopefully not too far away from paving some of the newer sections in which will take traffic off the older sections where some of those cut-throughs are. I'm not saying that that will solve all those problems, but that will solve it in a few spots. Yeah, we all share the frustration with regards to Franklin Road. I think we know the status and what that means. You know, we have communicated with T-Dot in the past. I don't know that there's anything that's going to speed it up at this point, but that's not really your point. Your point is the condition of the pavement, and I will share that with the parties from the city that are involved in that project, and hopefully we can see some response to that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Bednar? Hearing none. We'll move to our report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Little, no report for y'all tonight.
Thank you. We'll now move to our reports and comments by Commissioners, and we'll start this evening with Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. The Historic Board met last Friday, and we are currently doing a project on trying to document all the spring houses that we can locate in the City of Brentwood. Most of them, of course, are on private property, so we're sort of dependent on homeowners letting us know. We don't want to do anything with them or come on your property. We just want to know where they are and see if we can find any history on them. So if you have one on your property, you can notify me or the Chairman of this project, Carol Crigger, or Deanna Lambert, and just give us your address, and someone will contact you. We would appreciate that. Next month, we start the open houses again on the third Sunday of the month from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Bowling Spring Academy, so bring your children and come out and see the park, Prim Historic Park on Moore's Lane, and visit the inside of the schoolhouse and see what the students of the old age used in the classroom. I also want to thank the Leadership Brentwood Group for inviting us last week to come and be as part of their Government Day, and they are doing a project. One of the groups has taken on the root cellar at Ravenwood Mansion, so we're excited to see what they do with that. They've been running their plans fastest, and it looks like a really good project. We're very grateful for what they're doing. And lastly, I saw a lovely video, which we all saw today, Officer Billy Townsend, who has been with us five years. Now, we have a lot of people that have been with us five years and 10 years, and I don't necessarily take the time out to congratulate them and probably should, but I'm not always aware of that anniversary. But he made a Facebook video, and Chief Hughes was kind enough to share it with us, and it was just delightful to see what joy he takes in his job and working for the city. And I was very moved by his comment that... And I'm paraphrasing what he said. When he stops somebody, it's not just doing his job, he wants to know how he can help them, too. He sees everyone as people, and he's a people person, and he has a people job. So thank you, Officer Townsend, for sharing that, and we're so glad to have you with us. You said you want to be here after 10 years. I hope you're here after 20 or 30. So Chief Hughes, thank you for that also. And that's all I have. Oh, Mayor, you're going to address the new announcements from the Governor, right, about the new vaccine dates?
Sorry, forgot to unmute. Just received those, I believe, starting now, 55-plus can do it, but on April 5, the vaccines are going to be open to anyone 16 and above if you schedule. Of course, there's many private entities that now are doing the vaccine, so I'm assuming that's the date you were speaking of?
Yes, I didn't want to steal your thunder if you were planning that announcement, because the letter was to you and not to the City Commissioners, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you. Sure. This is great news. We'll now move to Commissioner Gorman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was a nice time with Youth Leadership Brentwood and Leadership Brentwood last week. What a sharp group of young folks in high school and then the folks in Leadership Brentwood. It was a very good spend time with both groups. Also, Happy Easter. He is risen. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Commissioner Gorman. Commissioner Smithson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say a little bit about Leadership Brentwood. Over the years, they've had some unbelievable projects, and I want to commend them for one that I happened to be Mayor at the time, and they decided their project was to be able to get a roof for the amphitheater, because it had been without a roof for the whole time it had been built. And they asked Eddie Arnold and the city if they would go in together and pay for the roof. And we have a roof on the amphitheater that Eddie Arnold put $300,000 toward, and at that time, the city paid for half of it. We named it the Eddie Arnold Amphitheater, and that was a Leadership Brentwood project. So Leadership Brentwood is not necessarily just about leaders meeting. It truly is about learning about the city and state and local government, but also really nice projects that they do. They've been involved in playground projects and just different projects when you go around the city. We should really be proud of what they've done. I really appreciate it, and Lynn Tucker, for all she's done toward that over the years. The other thing I want to thank Officer Townsend also, that was a really nice video, and he looks young enough that he could probably be with us about 30 years or more, but he just really complimented who he works with and the City of Brentwood supporting him. I appreciate that. I also want to thank the Tree Board. I'll let him talk about that. Obviously, on the Library Board, we have an ongoing Margaret Sullivan space planning study that we're doing, and there's some other things going on at the library. Our next Library Board meeting will be April the 18th, and anyone's welcome to come at 9:00 p.m. at the library. First, a March the 25th is Nature Walk with Lindsay at 11:00 a.m. and at noon. Take a guide walk with Lindsay Dyer around the library grounds to explore and learn about the arboretum. On Friday, March the 26th, beginning at 11:00 a.m., is a plant swap. Just bring a plant with the label on it, starting at 9:00 a.m., to set up for the actual swap at 11:00. And then the library will be closed on Tuesday, April the 6, for Inventory Day, because it was missed due to snow and ice in February. So that's why everybody can visit the website and go by the library. We have an unbelievable library, so invite all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you for everybody for mentioning Arbor Day and, in this case, Arbor Week. There's really a fantastic thing going on here in our city and a great tradition. You know, this year marks the 32nd year in a row, I believe, and I guess if any Commissioners, if that's not quite right, let me know, but I believe it's our 32nd year as a Tree City USA. So something I found out is that fewer than 15% of municipalities qualify as a Tree City. And so it's a great honor for us. It really shows our commitment to the green space and to the environment in our city, among other things. So we're very proud of that. And our volunteers this year, as you all mentioned, we've got kind of a COVID-friendly virtual Arbor Day approach this year. So as the Mayor mentioned earlier in his comments, we have something going on pretty much every day of the week. It kicked off yesterday where we had pretty much the whole Tree Board out there, as well as some other folks helping out, handing out saplings over at the library. So Regina, thank you very much for the library being very supportive, Season's out there, among others.
They're not on our... They're not... I think they go through a consent agenda, also. They're doing comments from the Commissioners.
Caldwell, is that you?
Caldwell, would you mute yourself, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So anyway, so Sunday, we're out there. Because we're a Tree City USA, we've been sent about 800 saplings, so burr oaks, sweetgum trees, bitter pecan trees, and also Bradford Tree Services came out with red bud... Well, actually, with saucer magnolia, and Middle Tennessee Electric brought out red buds. So we had a wide assortment of both large trees and small trees. Folks were handing those out. We had the big ice cream truck out there, and we were super excited to have them. They gave away a lot of ice cream. In fact, Bradley's Curbside Creamery said they had over 200 servings done in a very carefully-distanced, socially acceptable way. They had some trees left over at the end of the day yesterday, but I believe what I've heard is that all the trees have been picked up. There may be a few that are going to the plant swap that Regina mentioned, but overall, we thought it was a really good, successful event. We had Elaine Allen as our first winner of one of the many $50 prizes we're giving away this week as part of the celebration, and Deanna had come out and did a Facebook Live video from the event that's received over 1,500 views online. So really a good way to kick it off. The Mayor went through our daily schedule of events, something pretty much every day this week, but really culminating in the live presentation on Saturday, the 27th. So 11:00 a.m. this Saturday, we've got the live video. Appreciate all of y'all who have participated in putting that together. As part of that video, we're going to be announcing a big follow-up contest. So this contest is one of the bigger things the Tree Board has done in addition to Arbor Day, sponsored by State Volunteer Mutual Insurance Company, so we really appreciate their support on it. And once again, want to thank our many sponsors, Middle Tennessee Electric, Publix, Bartlett Tree Experts, Brad, Brady's Curbside Creamery, and our media sponsor, Homepage Media through the Bartlett homepage. So moving on, Park Board, we had mentioned last meeting that we have some things we're looking at, including the possibility of folks looking into incorporating turf into some of our park facilities. No further updates on that. Also wanted to mention, you know, y'all have mentioned our first responders in the video today, and I tell you what, that was just a great, I guess, acknowledgement of the sort of culture that we're generating here with our first responders, and it was just a pleasure to watch that. Also, I guess, Mayor, I'd like to mention that during our informational meeting last week, the idea of trying to come up with some sort of approach to zoning in sort of a large format, lower-density approach. I know we've been talking a lot about being able to average three acres per lot in some circumstances and trying to make that work, and a couple Commissioners mentioned that they would be interested in seeing some sort of, I guess, proper mechanism for trying to approach those kinds of projects that would average, I guess, three acres per lot across a larger area is something that might benefit our city going forward. So I just thought that was very interesting and wanted to make sure we kept that in front of us. But with that, thank you very much, and Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the other Commissioners covered everything from Leadership Brentwood and youth leadership and being involved in that, which was great, as well as Arbor Day and thanking the Tree Board, so I won't elaborate on that. But I do want to elaborate on Officer Townsend and what the video he put out, and I think it's great. And what struck me in his video was the servant's heart that he said he has, and I think that's very true. And I feel like our leadership in the Police Department in Brentwood from the top down have that servant's heart, and they have made sure that everyone they hire has the servant's heart, and I just really want to thank Officer Townsend for putting that out there, and also our Police Department for that example that they set. So I didn't want to gloss over that part. I just wanted to point that out, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McMillan. Vice Mayor Travis.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't go through everybody. By the time you get to the Vice Mayor or Mayor, a lot's been covered, so just say thank you to the Tree Board. Also, thank you to Officer Billy Townsend. That was very moving. I would like to recognize one person. I try to find people within the city that I think are going a little bit above and beyond, and I like to send them notes or call them up and thank them. I'd like to acknowledge this person at this meeting, and that's Todd Petrowski. He's in the other room. What people don't realize is Todd's probably been at City Hall since early this morning, and he has to be here to demand the microphone and the camera in the annex room in case someone wants to speak, and he'll be here to the end of the meeting, just like we are. And I just want Todd to know that he's not taken for granted. He's greatly appreciated. Electronic meetings have been challenging for a lot of people, but they've been good, and I think we've done a very good job as a City of Brentwood of keeping people informed and hosting meetings in a very responsible manner. Hopefully, we're going to see the end of these soon, and we'll get to see our fellow Commissioners again live and in person, which I think all of us want. The Planning Commission will have an info meeting on Thursday, April the 1st, at 8:00 in the morning. The Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, April the 6, because the basketball championship is on Monday night. the basketball championship is on Monday night. Lord knows who's going to be champion because those brackets are wrecked, just wrecked for everybody. Finally, just want to say thank you to Chief Hughes, City Manager Bednar. The mayor, Commissioner Gorman, and I took a tour along with some other city personnel of the police headquarters. Let me tell you, when you get over there, it's not a police station, it's not a police precinct, it's a headquarters. And it's something that our officers deserve. The police headquarters are going to make our officers better, and our officers, by being better, will even do greater work for the city of Brentwood. There's nothing in there that's flush or overdone. It's things that are needed. It's things that have been put on the back burner for a long time. It's things that make our city safer for all of us. Thank you, Chief Hughes and your department for the planning and everything that went into this. Greatly appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I won't go through everything. The commissioners did such a great job of covering many of the events we've had the last two or three weeks and appreciate all my fellow commissioners' hard work and great attention to detail to our city of Brentwood. I did want to mention the leadership and youth leadership Brentwood. There again, our chairperson of the tree board, Lynn Tucker, works hard to help with these events, and that was Government Day, of course. Want to welcome back everyone from spring break and hope you've had a good rest and relaxation and get back into the groove here as we head towards the last few weeks of the school year. Also, I just, the tour of the police headquarters was absolutely fantastic. That's a project we've worked on for many years to make sure we've got it correct, and I think we've done a great job. And what I was impressed about is a lot of times when you're involved with large projects, whether it's an office or business or church or even city, sometimes you plan and whatever. And as you get towards the end of the project, that, well, we really couldn't do that, or we really couldn't do this. And instead, this, everything we had planned for has been done, and even some more efficiencies have been put in during the building process. So very, very impressed. Chief Hughes and, of course, our city manager Kirk Bednar and all the many staff members that work on it, and architects and the parent company and the construction and all. It's going to be a great asset to the city of Brentwood and will greatly enhance already a very safe city. So we appreciate it much. The officer Facebook, I shared it on my Facebook because I was so impressed by his video and greatly encouraged as a city leader that we have this caliber of individual working as one of our police. And we've got a department full of servant hearts, you might say, and good shepherds. I think they like to say warrior shepherds. They tend to shepherd and truly carry out the motto of serve and protect. As well as Commissioner Gorman mentioned, would like to wish everyone a happy Easter. We won't see you again in a meeting until after Easter, so hopefully everyone will have a wonderful celebration. And now move into our agenda if there's no further comments from any of the commissioners. Hearing none, we'll go to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is read as one item. Any item can be pulled from the consent agenda either by a citizen or someone from the commission. If not had any foreknowledge of anyone wanting to pull one, so I hear no objections, I will start reading the consent agenda. Consent agenda, item one. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-six. A resolution authorizing an alteration to the O S R D development plan for the Allen's Green subdivision for adoption. Consent agenda, item two. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-seven. A resolution authorizing an alteration to the O S R D development plan for the Brentwood Country Club subdivision for adoption. Consent agenda, item three. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-eight. A resolution adopting a consultant selection policy for projects funded in hold or in part with funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration or Tennessee Department of Transportation for adoption. Consent agenda, item four. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seventy-nine. A resolution authorizing the use of a competitive sealed proposals process for financial compliance audit services pursuant to section two dash two oh nine of the Brentwood Municipal Code for Adoption. Consent agenda, item five. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash forty. A resolution authorizing an agreement with Smith, Sekman, Reed Incorporated for construction oversight and coordination services for Franklin Road widening project for adoption. Consent agenda, item six. Approval of change order with B J B Construction for the ADA ramp project at the Cool Spring House. Consent agenda, item seven. Approval to purchase Cisco switches for the new police department headquarters. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gorman, second by Commissioner McMillan. Mr. Bednar, the roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gorman?
Aye.
Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Smithson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Travis?
Aye.
Mayor Little?
Aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move to old business. Old business, item one. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh six. An ordinance rezoning property located at ninety-two thirty Old Smyrna Road from A R Agricultural Residential Estate to R two suburban residential for consideration on second and final reading. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Travis in second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gorman. Mr. Bednar?
Mayor and commissioners, just briefly, again, this is second reading of the rezoning ordinance of approximately seventy-one acres of land on Old Smyrna Road, known as the Mick property to most people. The proposed development developer of this is Grove Park Land Company. There's been really no changes in the plans or proposals since you considered it on first reading, so I won't necessarily review it all in great detail. I know there are representatives of the applicant on the call tonight if you have questions or would like them to overview their proposal. But again, this is a rezoning from A R to R two. While there is a proposed development plan shown for the R two development, just a reminder that you are not adopting that development plan. It is not binding under an R two rezoning. But that is what the developer has indicated they would propose to the Planning Commission moving forward if the R two zoning is approved as part of this ordinance. Again, myself and Jeff Dobson are here to answer any questions, as are representatives of the applicant.
Any questions or comments from commissioners?
It said, I made the comment that I really appreciate the time that the staff has taken to help answer all my questions up to this point and the opportunity to attend the public hearing and hear the comments from residents on this. Of course, rezoning is not something we take lightly, and it's something I felt has been very important to learn more about in terms of not just, you know, what's being discussed as part of the proposal, but, you know, what the possible outcomes can be around something like this. So thank you very much to the people who've taken the time to answer questions and take the time to fully understand this.
Why don't we let the representative or the developer go through and kind of give us an overview of the project, especially for those residents that may be tuning in for the first time?
Sure, Commissioner Gorman, this is Ray Caldwell with Reagan Smith. I guess we can walk through the slides. Again, we've been through a number of presentations with this, both before you and the Planning Commission and at the neighborhood meeting. I would say there is one thing that's changed since the first reading, is that is the fact that we have recorded the restrictions that we have referred to that would restrict what can be developed on the property to what's shown with the maximum number of lots shown there. So there is some protection in place, even though this is R two zone that Grove Park and the property area felt were important to put in place, understanding the sensitivity of the corridor for Old Smyrna Road. So if we can advance through the slides, I really cannot plan up for James. I have to go through the site again. Again, this is our site, seventy-one acres. As you can see, a couple of things driving the site on this is the existing home in the center of the property. There is a significant residence there that developers want to maintain. You'll see that most of the tree line, the vegetated portion of the property is to the east there. We do have a small stream on the southeast corner. And then you'll see how Ann and Dale and Brighton Wood and Sheridan Park all bound, both are west and north of the property line. As you can see, those properties are Zoned R two to the north. And to the west, we already do have O S R D zoning bounding us there as well. So certainly, we feel we're in context with what we're asking for with at least those subdivisions that do advise. If you go to the next slide, please. And this is, as we understood going into this, that there would be a great deal of concern about how many lots would be developed on this property and certainly understanding the policy that Brentwood has enacted over the years, last several years of not developing any additional properties on the property could be with the current zoning. So as required and as requested, we did a zoning for the current A R zoning on the property. As you can see, we get a total of nineteen, or yeah, twenty, nineteen lots, twenty-one lots on there, I'm sorry. As you can see, because of the configuration with the three-acre minimum requirements, you do see that with this layout, there are six lots at Woodfront, Old Smyrna Road on here. As a result of that, you'll see the potential facility to the southeast. And then paying close attention to the east property last seen how the, how these properties to the east or the lots to the east opened, getting crowded a little bit, resulting in building setbacks against that open property in that direction we did. I think since you last seen this, put these footprints on here to show how those could be, would be placed on the property potentially. We did show a connection to Cloverbrook Drive at the north. Again, I know there's been some discussion, you know, I think there's some planning commission members who would like to see that, but we also understand that that may not happen as a result of, you know, input from the neighbors. But our showing that connection right now is we did do a traffic study to identify, you know, what would happen if that property ended up making that connection and coming out to Old Smyrna Road. So again, total twenty-one lots, again, understanding that, you know, our goal, you know, was to develop a plan that we felt, you know, protected some of the more natural resources on the property as well as, you know, addressed Old Smyrna Road. I also wanted to point out the potential additional accesses on Old Smyrna Road too. You see, basically, with the access ordinance, we would be able to be lots, some common accesses, lots twenty, twenty-one, three, one, and two there. If you go to the next slide again, please. Again, this is the proposed plan that we have presented at all the meetings. Again, nothing has changed. This is envisioned as a dated, dated community. This does start with Old Smyrna Road again. What we did do with this plan, that we did not do in the other plan, we did reserve a hundred-foot right-of-way along Old Smyrna Road. Again, this gives you the opportunity, has some options, relative to some improvements to Old Smyrna Road in the future, if necessary. No lots directly flinting, or flinting that, all the lots are pushed to where they're facing to internal roads there. And again, along the front edge, instead of the six lots that you saw in front of there, we basically have one, two, three, four, four lots plus five, Lot Two there, that were basically backed up to there. Actually, the setbacks are a little bit further back as a result of that. In addition to that there, you can see along Old Smyrna Road, we do have fifteen-foot landscape easement that is proposed along there to provide an additional level of screening and protecting that intersection. As you come in, you can see that the development is focused on the house, that existing house there, the empty pond that is to the right to start to establish the character and exclusivity of the development, not to really create an sense of entry. And from there, I think, again, to the east, from what you saw in the previous plan, you still could get a feel of, again, put the house footprints in there just to show you how much more vegetation we did check along that boundary and along that edge. And even to the west, you know, we're able to pull the houses back further again. The only reason, again, these are two acre lots are better. The only reason that we did not request an R one zoning is because the flexibility we get with the setbacks, so they are less, resulting in the front road. So again, that enables us to pull the houses closer to the internal road network, which again gets it further away from Old Smyrna Road, gets it further away from the adjacent properties to our northeast and west here. So another ethical benefit of requiring that, of putting that in. If you go to the next slide, please, if there is one. Again, this shows kind of the comparison. I know there was some discussion of why we would not go in and request an R one zoning classification. What you see on the blue is the setbacks for the R two, which is what we're proposing. And if we took the same plan, which would meet the R two criteria, and put in those setbacks, you could see the red would indicate the setbacks, which again, particularly along Old Smyrna Road, would start to push those houses closer, closer to Old Smyrna Road. Next slide, please, if you don't mind. Again, I think we talked regionally about the connection. I won't go over this in detail. We have a traffic engineer here with us tonight in case you do want some questions. But again, it's just kind of showing you in context regionally with Cloverland and Church Street, there is a significant amount of traffic that is on that road if there was a connection, you know, that could start to funnel some traffic down up through Cloverbrook Drive. You do have Jones Parkway that has some traffic calming features. I know Cloverbrook is a little bit more rural, but a little bit wider too, which gives a little bit more potential free flow through there. So again, I think with that connection, the possibility is that that would introduce, you know, additional traffic onto Old Smyrna Road, which I know the goal is to kind of keep that traffic at a minimum in order to keep that character in place. If you can go to the next slide. Again, just some, just some things, again, some of the things I think that are the benefits. I think I basically went through this with this presentation on what we think are the benefits. I think, again, the biggest benefit to me, at least having done work in Brentwood, just on an understanding of Old Smyrna Road, the importance of that, is just how, you know, we feel that this plan is a better plan than what could be to develop from the A R, and gives us a better chance to protect that and also gives you a little bit of flexibility for any improvement, should that day come, that improvements are necessary along there. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Now Grove Park has a, has a history, has a track record in Brentwood, and I think everybody understands the quality of the work that they do and the quality of the product that they've created. Caldwell, correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be four million, fifteen million dollar homes. Is that, is that what I heard, I think you say in the past? So these are, these are, this is a, this is a neighborhood that I think all of Brentwood will be proud of once it's developed. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and again, myself, our traffic engineer, and Caldwell's here to answer the questions if you do have any.
Any questions? Any further comments? Any questions or comments? Not all the last of the roll call vote.
Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Aye.
Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Smithson?
No.
Vice Mayor Travis?
Aye.
Mayor Little?
No.
I believe that's a four to three vote in favor, Mayor.
All right. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh six passes four to three. Is there any other old business? All right, we'll now move to new business. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh eight. An ordinance amending the municipal code by adding a new section, two dash two one three, to establish- the municipal code by adding a new section 2-213 to establish an unclaimed property policy for consideration on first reading. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Smithson in a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Mr. Bednar?
Mayor, I'm going to ask the city attorney to briefly address this item.
It's only been a year. You think I'd figure out the mute button. Thank you all so much. As we discussed on Thursday, this ordinance will allow the city to dispose of unclaimed personal property when it comes into the possession of the city. And these are typically things that have either been lost or abandoned, like items like bicycles, electronics, jewelry, even balls at the, at the park. And these things have been turned into city staff. And of course, staff attempts to reunite the items with their owner whenever possible, but sometimes that's simply not, not something that can be done. So this will allow city staff to dispose of these items after they are held for 60 days and after, again, staff does try to make contact with any known owner. And if no owner is found, then city staff can dispose of the items by auction, internet auctions such as Gov Deal, or a donation to a nonprofit or local governmental entity. And any funds obtained by any sale from unclaimed property will go directly into the city's general fund. Do you all have any questions about this ordinance?
Any questions for our city attorney? Hearing none, I'll ask for Mr. Bednar to do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gorman?
Aye.
Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Smithson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Travis?
Aye.
Mayor Little?
Aye. Ordinance 2021-08 passes unanimously. Now, move to our second item under new business is appointment of one member to the Tree Board. Appropriate as we celebrate Arbor Day.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is an appointment for an unexpired term that will serve, the person appointed will serve until the end of February 2022, so approximately one year. You have three applicants for this one position. And as we have done for other board appointments with an electronic meeting, I will call on each commissioner in the roll call order and ask you to state the name of the applicant for which you are voting, and we'll see if we get one applicant with the majority of the vote. So Commissioner Andrews?
Troy Beeler.
Commissioner Dunn?
Scott Page.
Commissioner Gorman?
Scott Page.
Commissioner McMillan?
Scott Page.
Commissioner Smithson?
Scott Page.
Vice Mayor Travis?
Troy Beeler.
And Mayor Little?
Troy Beeler.
So I have Scott Page with four votes.
I believe Scott Page will be our new appointment to the Tree Board. Is there any other new business before the city? Hearing none, I move where adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.